Things to say here, I think. So, maybe if we go extra fast, there might be time for a question from the audience. Because I know one person obviously wants to ask. So, are we just going alphabetically, or are we going left to right? Or how do you... Do you have... I'm gonna go left to right. Okay, alright. Three minutes. Angelina.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Angelina. Thank you so much to the Leah Women Voters.
If they stand, they will want to be close to the microphone.
Be closer to the microphone. Is that better? Okay. Thank you for the Leah Women, because you have been instrumental in allowing this college to be here at the beginning. Thank you so much, CJ, for volunteering your time tonight. I'm here to ask for your vote on November 7th, or before. I'm a strong advocate of education, because that started with my mother. You see, my mom was an immigrant of... From Finland. English was her second language, and she left her home when she was 13 due to intolerable situations at home. She missed out on school, so for me, education was a top priority in our home, to make sure that we went as far as we could, as well as going back into the education system and making sure others had the same opportunities. After she became a citizen, and she graduated from a community college, the same one that my father, and eventually my brother and I did, she continued her courses into interior design. My brother and my father continued to transfer to a bachelor's program in IT, and I was the only one in my family that continued to a master's and doctorate program. I worked in the foster care system, supporting children in their placements. I was instrumental in the evidence-based research database as a contributor of cognitive behavioral therapy, to make sure and utilize in the school system that it is a valuable resource to provide supportive services for children with disabilities. All that was possible because I started out in a community college that had high-quality education, and I was able to get a Pell Grant that covered those two years. There was a difficult time in high school where funding for school was not an option, so as my brother and I worked full-time during that time to pay for the mortgage and utilities due to parental bitter divorce, that was not something I wasn't sure I could complete, but with the Pell Grants gave me that option, and so that's something that I'm very passionate about, making sure and protecting. My husband and I are married 10 years. We just celebrated our 10th anniversary. And my son is second grade, and he's in the DeSoto School District. I chose to run for this office because I saw a lot of stuff that was happening out in Topeka. The gun zone campus was an issue for me. The teachers' due process attacked, a lot of the budget issues was something that was concerning for me. I know that Johnson County Community College allows a lot of students to be prepared to transfer, to come back and take continuing ed courses, enjoy leisure activities like the arts and cultures and sports. So, it's something that I'm really passionate about, making sure that we protect and maintain, because our community deserves to continue to have a job creator, and that's what I see in Johnson County Community College. I ask for your vote on November 7th or before. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Henry Sanday. I appreciate the opportunity to present myself before you all, and I think the Leah Women Voters who put on this program. About myself, I grew up in Topeka, Kansas. Grew up during the 60s, and I grew up during the 60s. It was a really interesting time, civil rights, Vietnam War, just a lot of interesting things going on in life. It was a wonderful time to grow up. And being Hispanic, one of the things that was a part of our life was, my father was a migrant worker, growing up, and was forced to drop out in the sixth grade to help support his family, working in the fields. And my mother was one of 13 children, one of four girls, and she was forced to drop out in the eighth grade to help support the man so they could work and do all the jobs at home, to help out my mother, my grandmother. So, they always yearned for education, and so my sister, brother and I were born, and I'm the oldest, they're doing was to go on the change of GED. And so, my whole life, growing up, we would always study in the kitchen table. They studied for their GED, and we studied our daily school lessons, and that was an ongoing process that just happened every day. My parents believed in education. It was an open, outdoors, overcome racism, overcome economic challenges of sorts, and so it was instilled in us that we would be in school, we would stay in school, and we would eventually go to college. The reality was, of the three children, I was probably the slowest learner, and I struggled in school, but my parents still forced me to stay on task and to be committed to the fact that I would ride back from high school and I would go to college, even at the advice of our council, which not to do so. But point being, I did go to college. My sister went to college, my brother, and we all became state-run student workers, actually. My dad was a barber who was self-employed, so we all ran small businesses. So, education's been a wonderful opportunity to improve our quality of life, and here in Johnson County, it's been a way to really uphold an excellent quality of life that we experience. And so, the college experience is very important to me, and specifically the community college experience, which is accessible to students who otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Buenas tardes. A todo el mundo. My name is Chris Rozell. I come from a family of educators. My wife was an English and ESL teacher. My wife and two daughters are back with sand cleats. They want to come. My mother was a teacher. My brother was a teacher. My sister was a college nursing teacher. I believe in education. I've been at JCCC as a student for the last six semesters, maybe it's seven, and I take courses every semester, but this semester, I'm also going to KU. I believe in education. I understand education, but I do have a number of degrees. I have a BS double major, chemistry and zoology, an MS in nutrition, and MBH in international public health, doctoral studies, all the coursework for whole systems change. After doing a lot of development work in Asia, in Africa, in South America, Central America, the Caribbean, trained as a program planner, I became convinced that it's not adequate for me to go in and plan for community. What is adequate is to bring the entire community together, to plan together, to go through an organized process that reaches consensus, that reaches the best for business, that reaches the best for the civic community, for the faculty, for the students, for the administration. The role... There are two ideas about representation. One is that we speak instead of the rest of the people, and the other is that we bring the rest of the people to the table. I bring the rest of the people to the table. I would like to ask you for your vote this November 7th. If you haven't already voted, registered for an advance ballot, go to addvapp.pdf online and request an advance ballot, so you can vote from home even. Thank you.
I'm Lee Cross. I'm the trustee here at the college, the current treasurer of the board, and I'd like to say thank you to the college, to the Nuremberg Museum, CJ for helping host and moderate. We have two of our executive vice presidents here tonight, Barb Larson and Randy Weber. And thank you all who are here, including my wife, who happens to be here, I think this is the second time. You were here one time in 2013. And thank you to all of you for putting forth your time to run a county-wide campaign. It is quite a task, and as all of you know, it's a big deal. The college was extremely important to me and my family, and that's why I chose to run for the college four years ago, and it's been the privilege of my lifetime to sit on this board and help protect the college and do the things that we need to do to train our students in the 21st century. In my first term, I'm proud to say, having worked with trustee Cook, and not always agreeing, but seeing his commitment to the college and being proud to be deciding to vote to help appoint Henry Sanday, our first minority on the board, and overseeing and supporting the president, who helped appoint the first minority we've ever had in our cabinet, Dr. Mickey McCloud, who we recruited and plucked from the MCC, just on the other side of the state line. So, I'm proud of the fact that we have pushed back diplomatically, working with legislature, to undo the disastrous tax cuts in 2012, to begin restoring the state budget and restoring the state's commitment to the community college movement, and begin to more fully subsidizing the colleges where we were before pre-recessionary levels have been kicked in. And that has been an increased burden on our students over the last few years. I think the administration and board has done its best with the cards that have been given it, but we have more work to do. We need to begin to move toward reducing the burden on our students, moving toward cost-free solutions for these students that have been implemented in many other states, including by a Republican governor in Tennessee, making sure that the state has its commitment to essentially grades 13 and 14, so that all of our students can begin to learn and earn a good job in the 21st century. I'm proud that we have solar panels on four of our roofs now, in a public-private hybrid with our foundation. I'm looking forward to having more solar panels on all of our roofs. We have plans for that. I'd like to have windows that open, and I'll talk about that later. And I sure appreciate your vote, honor before November 7th. CrossForTheCollege.com is my website. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening. My name is Paul Snyder, and it's a privilege to be here. My wife Alice is here. She can raise her hand. As Lee started the reference, running a county-wide campaign is a big challenge, and so without a supportive family structure and friends and neighbors willing to help you, it's a very large task, but one that we've proudly undertaken, and I think we're making some good strides. My background has been primarily in public affairs and public policy work for larger organizations. Kansas City Power and I have worked for a solar company as well, so I'm equally as proud of the sustainability efforts that the college has made over the years. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Leah Women Voters, play an indispensable role right now in election season, trying to get the word out. We historically have had very low voter participation during off-cycle elections like this, and of course, this year is the first time that the college elections have been in the fall instead of the spring, so I think we're all kind of facing the same sort of pressure to raise the awareness. And one of the reasons that a lot of people don't pay attention to the college is because it's so well-run. There are no current issues. One of the things, when I started looking into this, is that we have a fantastic board, and that's really been one of my priorities when we fill out surveys. One of my priorities is really just maintaining the status quo, because we do have an effective board. Four of the current board members have endorsed me, along with a number of past board members as well, and you can find those on my website at paulsnyder.org. I didn't ask the existing trustees to endorse me. I thought that in the election, I thought that I might be a conflict of interest, but really excited about the opportunity to really dig in and help steer the college. I've been involved in the county in a number of different ways. I'm on the county parks board and was chair latched here this year, also on the board of United Community Services, and I have a number of board members here with that. Both Sandra Sanchez used to be on the board there, Donna Loffler is currently, and Dr. McMillan is as well, and I'm sure I'm missing Dolores, who were on the board advisors at one point. In any regard, one of my priorities, in addition to just keeping the college headed in its same trajectory, is really working on workforce development options. I think with my business background, we can reach some new connections with employers. And also, I want the college to be a leader, as we have a transitioning population, aging population in the county. I think the college can really take a leadership role in finding new ways to engage our seniors, both from a learning perspective and cultural perspective, but also helping with other everyday tasks. So, like everyone else, I hope you support myself here on November 7th or before, when voting starts on the 18th, and thank you for having me.
Unlike the other candidates, they didn't teach sixth grade, and I did, and they taught me to look for the unexpected, and so I just thought I'd take the microphone out of the stand and stand up and honor your request, so thank you. That's what I learned from them. My name is Jerry Cook. I am seeking a third term on the board, and I'll share that with you in a minute, but I think it's important for you to know, I came from northwestern Minnesota to move here to Harrisonville, Missouri, with our family, of course, who have a superintendent of schools, and my wife and I were high school sweethearts, and she's sitting in the back of the room. We happened to get married in October, and hmm, this is October, isn't it? And on the 19th, and I guess next week is the 19th, so 49 years ago, Sharon and I got married, and we'll be celebrating our 49th wedding anniversary. Thank you for your support, and thank you for being here. I'm a first-generation community college student. I then transferred to a four-year school, got an elementary teaching degree. I've been an elementary teacher, sixth grade, as I said, over 20 years in public education. I was an elementary principal, superintendent of schools down in Harrisonville. So, I've been on both sides of being a board member and being an administrator. I've worked in private business. I was with a company that worked in 34 states, and we did school busing for school districts and public transportation for adults, all kinds of different transportation. I spent 19 years with the Oldham Park Convention and Visitors Bureau, and so I have quite an extensive background in business, in education, and in public service. I have cards at the back table outside the room that will give you a real thumbnail sketch on that experience. Why am I running for a third term? I was elected in 2009, re-elected in 2013, and I'm really running for a third term for probably three or four primary reasons. I've served as chairman of the board. I've served on every committee of the board. I currently chair the management committee, which oversees a lot of the major decisions. Number one, we're in really good financial standing. We do a financial ratio analysis, and we rank among the tops in the community colleges in the nation. In fact, even compare favorably against universities and colleges. This past year, we had no increase in the mill levy. We did not raise tuition, and we're in the middle of a $100 million building project for career tech education. Secondly, we're going through HLC accreditation, and we'll talk more about that in a second. And I think it's important for have stability on the board and knowledge of the board to go through that very, very important process. I also serve on the Association of Community College Trustees, representing the western region, over 1,100 colleges. I would ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your introductions, everyone. We're gonna go to the first question here, and I want to start with Lee, because you mentioned affordability and sort of the financial status of state institutions. So, question for everybody is, if a college's expenditures increase every year, but state funding stays the same or even declines, would you support an increase in tuition or an increase in local taxes? And please explain.
You start with me.
Yes.
I would probably prefer an increase in the mill and/or advocating for more money from the state. That's been a consistent position I've had, and it was, I believe, the very first vote I had on the board in July of 2013 was to raise the mill one mill. I gave trustee Cook a lot of credit. He voted for that, and four others did not, in order to help begin to rebuild our reserves. It was absolutely vital. I think that the board and the current administration and previous one has done a good job with existing resources and in a very difficult set of political environments, at the federal level, with a lot of gridlock, in front of Topeka, and then with local interplay. So, I would like to see more increased state funding. The entire community college movement in Kansas needs it. Our taxpayers need relief from that burden, and I'd like to see, if anything, we begin to move toward a cost-free solution, which you can do, obviously, by having greater commitment from the local and state level. But I think while that is an increased burden on local taxpayers, I think it's a relief in some level that they can begin to set people free from some debt, so that they can buy new homes faster, begin to spend in the economy faster, and that would be any argument that I would have against someone who'd say, maybe I was being reckless. But again, to answer your question, I would lessen the burden on our students.
Okay. I'll go random here. Henry?
Yes, same question.
Same question.
When I... I was appointed two years ago to replace Mr. Bob Grumman, who resigned, and one of the charms of the school, and the principals of the school, was an emphasis on local control. And by that, that's why we have trustees who run this institution, is because we are given the responsibility to make the financing decisions in regards to decisions of Johnson County. And so, the emphasis is Johnson County. It's really not the state or any other institution outside of Johnson County. And so, my commitment is to Johnson County, and when it comes with challenges of increased costs, I have to take the responsibility of, you know, consideration of the finances of the citizens of Johnson County. My commitment is to not raise the mill levy, and my commitment is to keep the tuition in check. And then what we have to do, being on the past five years with the leadership of Dr. Sobchak, is to figure out how to manage our resources and yet keep the mill levy in check and keep the tuition in check. And that's what he's done for the last five years. He's actually reduced costs. So, damp burden, and that responsibility falls on our leader, who's President Bill Sobchak, and we as trustees are here to help him make those decisions and give him guidance. But that's my perspective, and that's my philosophy in running the finances of the institution here.
Let's go to Jared.
Thank you. Well, it's a question that is faced by all 1,100 community colleges in the country. I'm going to make a lot of remarks tonight based on the questions I heard out in the lobby, so some of you did ask me questions, and this is one of the issues that all community colleges face. For 2017, 2018, we have a general operating budget of roughly $150 million. 64% of that comes from local taxes, from local property tax. About 21% comes from student tuition, and 14% comes from the state, and then there's that other area where we get a percent here and a percent there. Since I've been on the board since 2009, that state contribution has probably gone from about 24%, 25% down to now the 14%. And trustee Cross makes a great point. You have expenditures on the one hand and revenues on the other hand, and where do you keep adding? And Henry made a good point about Dr. Sobchak cutting expenses. You can either fine more revenue and keep spending, or look at reducing expenditures, and I think this college has done a really significant job of looking at cutting expenditures. Another question I had out in the lobby was, how do we eliminate unnecessary programs that we continue to have in education, and how do we then add new programs? If I have an opportunity later, I'll speak about some really exciting new programs we have that are nation national models. So, what I favor, I think it's important to keep costs affordable for all students. Our current tuition rate's $93. That includes $16 in fees, and we're about one-fourth the cost of KU, K-State, MU, any four-year school. Nationwide, that number's about one-fifth the cost. So, I'd like to keep tuition where it is. I'd like to keep local property tax where it is. We're the beneficiaries in this county of assessed valuation. In fact, I was at a breakfast the other day with the county assessor, and I asked him, what does it look like? And he said, "Well, Jerry, I think your house is gonna go up and down." And I said, "Great. I don't want my house to diminish." Obviously, I don't necessarily want to pay higher taxes either, but it's a great debate, and I think we have to resolve what's the cost to help young people follow the mission of our college, and that is inspire learning, to transform lives, to improve communities. And that's what we should be committed to. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you. Well, I would never commit that I wouldn't consider raising the mill levy, nor would I commit that I would always consider raising the mill levy. You know, without context, it's hard to really make those assumptions and assertions at this point in time. I would concur with my colleagues that student affordability is a critical issue of what we're trying to do. If we're trying to get students in the doors and prepare them for colleges or other pathways to careers, you know, it has to be affordable. That said, taxpayers, and we'll see this increasingly through the campaigns next year, a lot of taxpayers in the county are increasingly sensitive about what their property tax burden is. Some of that is a reflection of increased valuation. We have a very large jump this year. That's projected next year as well, and we're not, luckily, not burdened by some of the property tax lids that other governments are faced with, but it always seems to be a delicate balance of how we do that. And as trustee Cross said, I think we can work with our state legislators to increase funding for that. My background says it's in public policy work, and it was, so I think that's a real strength in addition to the board riding that value, in addition to our contract of representation that we have in Topeka.
Angelina?
My career in psychology is a career of resourcing people, problem-solving, building long-term stability plans, acting rationally, being practical, and getting feedbacks. I think this is where the topics is something that's very important, to collaborate with the stakeholders. You're our boss, and so we have to be able to answer to you if we have to make a decision to raise the mill levies. I am not for the option of raising tuition. I think we need to make sure that it's as affordable as possible. I also would be painstaking to have to vote for mill levy increase, when I think there's two components there. The federal and the state government needs to pony up on their end as well, and they need to be able to contribute to our institution and our community. I think the idea of taxation needs to be changed. It is something, when you live in a community, this is what you pay. You pay your taxes. We enjoy the public services of a public road, our bridges, our medical, and significant research and science, communications technology. These are all aspects of when you invest in the community with your taxes. There couldn't be a private sector without the public, and so this is something that I think we need to really address and understand, that when we pay into our taxes, we are also benefiting from the long-term investment that people before us have put in. So, I think we also need to really make sure that the state and federal government are paying their fair share, their membership dues, and that people in the community are as well. There's a lot of aspects that we can sit around and we can discuss to find out other options if we have to change anything in our budget, but I would really make sure that we include all the stakeholders first.
Chris?
Clearly, I think education should be free for any student who can perform decently in education. When my daughter got into MIT, they wrote back and said the cost of attending was $65 a year. They said, "Send in your FAFSA." They assessed the family's ability to pay and said they would give her out of their endowment $32.5 a year the first semester, and pay her $32.5 a year the second semester. And when she graduated, I asked her what had happened to her balance, and she said that she was $12,000 to deposit. The point is, I have classmates that I've sat with at JCCC who take 40, who work 40 hours a week, full-time job, and then another 20 hours a week, half-time job, and then take 18 semester hours, and I'm sorry, the point is... And I'm sorry, the poorest in our community should not have to pay the most to become the earners of the future. When I did development work, I did it on the basis of assessing needs, talking with the community what they could do, and writing grant proposals. So I got $20 million in grants. Okay, we need $22.5 million a year here. From contributions, from grants, from multiple searching of financing of possibilities. We can make it so that college here, like college in Europe, is not only affordable but free. That we invest in our young people. They don't invest in us.
Okay. We got everyone for that first question. So we'll move on to the second question, and Chris, let's stay with you on this one. This one is about board of regents of oversight and seamless transfers to universities. So are Kansas County Community College students adequately prepared when they transfer so that they can achieve a bachelor's degree within two to three years?
Yes, to give the situation, the last three years I've been taking classes here. Now I'm taking classes at KU and here. So I take three classes a week here and two classes a week there, commuting back and forth to KU three days a week. Why not, right? But our students there are doing fine. They are well-prepared. I'm well-prepared for the classes I have, which are advanced engineering classes. soft classes. So our students are getting great preparation here. And our teachers here, many of them are great. There is a lot of variation in quality and in methods. And as a member of the board, I would like to talk about some of the possibilities and what we might do to have across the board excellence. Thank you.
Let's go to your right, Henry.
In the short year and a half that I've been on the board, to my understanding, and as the research has been presented for me, that our students do very, very well transferring to the four institutions in the two-state area of specifically the KU, K-states, Wichita State, Pittsburgh State, and MU, UMKC. Our experience is probably 30% of our students attend. Or 30% of the students that attend KU come from our institution with great success and are graduating, and they're very much recruited from all the major institutions. And in fact, I believe at KU and K-State, when they graduate, they're graduating with a GPA of like two tenths higher than the freshmen that began in those respective institutions. So the work that's been here at this institution is phenomenal. I don't think you're going to find a better education for your freshman, sophomore year. So the return on investment at this institution is Second Amendment, and I'm proudly a part of that, and the short year and a half I've been a part of it. I can't take responsibility for that, but I am very proud to announce that it's an outstanding, successful program that has great success with students finishing their four degrees in a town like here.
Paul?
Well, I think it's clear that our students here are very well-prepared and do well in those four-year institutions. And that's really a testament to the great faculty and staff that we have in place here that really monitor and track all those individual statistics. But we have over 1,000 different agreements with colleges that accept our students, and clearly, they wouldn't do that if they weren't consenting and being able to educate quality students to move through their four-year institutions. And so in addition to the more formalized program that Chris talked about with KU, our credit hours are accepted almost universally to most schools that a child would ever want to go to.
Thank you. Let me break it down into two parts. You referenced the Kansas Board of Regents. So the Kansas Board of Regents governs the, I believe, six universities in the state, universities, colleges, four-year schools. And they have oversight responsibility of the 19 community colleges and six technical colleges in Kansas. Sometimes we wonder if they understand oversight versus governance in the community colleges, but that's an ongoing kind of issue. I had the chance to serve as the chairman of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees overseeing those 19 colleges. And when I came on in 2009, and Dr. Weber and Dr. Larson are cracking a cringe when I try to remember these numbers, but in 2009, let's just say, we had very few courses of transfer articulation to the four-year universities, KU, K-State, Wichita State, et cetera. And now we have, I believe, over, let's say, near 50 or 60 courses that transfer seamlessly to those universities. So we've made tremendous headway. That's a result of a lot of staff involvement, faculty involvement. If we have time to talk about how a course gets presented, that's an interesting story in itself. You just don't do that overnight. But I'm really pleased at the increase we've had in the number of courses that have seamless transfers to the four-year schools. A question I got in the lobby which pertains to this is, how do our students compare? Historically, if you look at freshman sophomores compared of Johnson County Community College to freshman sophomores of the area four-year schools, K-State, KU, Wichita State, MU, et cetera, UMKC, statistically, our students outperform those same freshmen and sophomores. They have historically very well. And the reason for that is twofold. We have lower class size, and we have lab work where students can go one-on-one and get lots of help. And each of our, what, 33 departments, those, on this campus, each of those departments takes seriously the mentoring and spending time one-on-one with students. So those are some of the reasons why our students outperform. In fact, one of our guests, and I can attest to that because my daughter just recently transferred, and all of her course was good, and she outperformed her counterparts at the four-year school. So I believe we've made good headway on the seamless transfer of credits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Chris had, I said, in psychology.
I said, "Sob."
Well, I appreciate that. And my father, he went here. He's a civil engineer. My mother was a nurse. The twin brothers between me and my youngest brother. One's now a civil engineer in the Dable Postgraduate School. His twin, his master's degree works in San Antonio. And my youngest brother's working as an architect in Austin. So it worked for us, and the academic community who study this soft subject, they say that that's all anecdotal, right? This doesn't apply statistically. Over what I've experienced as chair of the Learning Quality Committee, I think the articulation of agreements we have are excellent. I think our faculty, our staff, our administration, which very are to make sure we have the relationships in place. With the area schools, the legislature has chosen to open up the community college movement to market-based management. Maybe on the current one, the pass one to have. So we've availed ourselves of the Missouri market having a metro rate for the first time. And I personally witnessed going to court, being in the community with the Missouri folks, were excited to have the opportunity to come here. So I'd say yes, based on broad experience and observation. I would say that there are problems, problems that I've noticed in random meetings, and here's where the administration approaches. I think as a result of budgetary choices the state has made, we do see some competition for bodies, like some of this natural higher ed. But literally, some pushback in the courses that do transfer, say culinary, to a major area, region, school that I won't name. And literally, they want the money through their system. Literally, they want the human beings in their college town funneling money into their economies. And so I don't think that's anything that we do. It's just a broader criticism of essentially how the whole structure of higher ed works in Kansas. But I think we do an excellent job, and there's always room for improvement. Typically, I am a critic of the administration. But I think over the last four years, the administration has worked extremely hard to pioneer key performance indicators so that we have measurable metrics and parameters by which to judge what we're doing, which was extremely useful to frankly, a conservative legislature that was putting pressure on us and wanting to know, perhaps justifiably, what they were spending money on. So because of Dr. Sobchak and this board and my colleagues, I think foresight, we were able to spell out what we were doing that worked and that we didn't have just negative statistics because they left us without a degree, if that makes sense. So yes, I think our students are up here.
Great. Angelina?
I agree as well. I think the students that are coming out of the junior college are very well-prepared, and that is contributing to the fact of our importance on our faculty here, the protections and honoring their responsibilities to make sure that we retain good professors and that we are continuing to collaborate with them with collective bargaining to make sure that they're getting the needs that they want, but also that it's in a balance with what we can provide. There, Trustee Cross just mentioned about the key indicators. I think that is something that I would always keep an eye on because that's how we can measure success. At this point, it does show that we are very successful at the transfer rate. The Board of Regents also has packets of statistics showing that we are up by 48% of people who get associate's degree and be able to move on. Those are key measurable indicators for me to watch and to keep an eye on. I'm slightly distracted because my husband and son just walked in the room. He just got off work. So for me, those are the components. But I did agree that we produce some of the finest students because of the faculty that we retain.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. This next one is very straightforward but allows you to elaborate. So let's just start with Jerry. Do you believe in the separation of church and state? Why are we not? What role should religion play in public service?
I do believe in the separation of church and state. I, you know, we, let me respond this way. We just had the Secretary of Education on campus, Betsy DeVos. And I had a very good friend, a couple of very good friends, call me and say, "Did you approve of that? Do you know that she was going to be on campus?" And I said yes, for three reasons. First of all, I respect the position of the Secretary of Education. And in that role, they asked to come to our campus. They could have come to any campus in the country. They chose to come to Johnson County Community College. The second reason is we have a great opportunity for her to learn about what we do here at Johnson County Community College. And for those of you that are unclear, she has received a lot of criticism because she's perceived to be for private schools and against public schools and is a wealthy kid that was able to go to a private school. So we need to educate her. Because when higher ed refuses to hear all points of view on an issue, we fail. I believe higher ed is about exposing people to all sides of the issue so that the citizenry can make an informed decision. Foundation of our democracy is an informed citizenry. And then the third reason I thought that was a good idea is that she came here to listen to our students. And you should have, if you didn't hear the television reports, I wish you could have heard our students respond to the Secretary of Education on how impactful this education has for them. Now what does that have to do about church and state? We each have our spiritual beliefs. We each have perhaps our religious beliefs. I'm one that believes that there's a higher being. And I'm comfortable knowing that when I'm finished on this earth, I'm going to be well taken care of. We have a tremendous split in this world, in this country, in this state, in this community about who's right and who's wrong. Which religious beliefs do we follow? I do believe in freedom of speech. I do believe in academic freedom. And I do believe that we all have the responsibility to hear the other point of view and be informed to the point where we can make a rational decision for the betterment of humankind. And in our own spiritual way, I would ask each of us to dig deep and find out, who am I? Who am I yet to become? And have I fulfilled the life that I have been chosen to live? And have I become the human being that I'm expected to become? Did I speak around it? Perhaps. But I do believe in the separation of church and state.
Let's go to the other end. Angelina?
I do believe in the separation of church and state. I believe it's a freedom issue that when the private depends on the public, so our public resources are invested by our taxes and our taxpayers. This allows choice, that someone has the choice to attend a private school in whatever scholar that they would enjoy or institution, as well as a public school that is separation of church and state.
Good. Paul?
I also agree that there should be a separation of church and state. I don't know that I have a lot to offer outside of what Trustee Cook and Angelina said. Would note that the college does have some very good religious studies classes and philosophy in that realm, and that is materially different than the broader context of the discussion. But have seen, I'm not aware of any issues that have come to the college where that's really been, an issue that's needed to be discussed on a broad stance. I certainly agree with the separation.
Lee?
I absolutely believe in the separation of church and state. And I get in some trouble when I tell folks that I think it was Jesus that came up with it. Render unto Caesar what is Caesar, render unto God what is God's. I did go to Catholic school growing up. I'm guided by my faith. I love my faith. It's my faith. I think it's just stayed that way. My mother was Catholic and a big Notre Dame fan. But we also lived in Lawrence growing up, came to school here. And I obviously worship KU, they're the sacrilegious, but you know, we loved KU immensely. Grew up in the Lawrence Public Schools, went to Catholic school, ended in the sixth grade. So I'm blessed to have this mixed hybrid of perspective. And it certainly helps me focus on the last lost and least among us to be able to say, as many of us have here tonight, that the burden should be lessened on our students. But with that said, I mean, it is a secular education that put me here. I do have a doctorate, and I'm licensed by the bars of Missouri and Kansas and have a duty to uphold our constitution. So I cherish that immensely. History shows that once you start requiring adherence to religion through the instruments of state, major problems happen. So I'm thrilled that we're a secular institution. I think the advances of science and everything that we do here through social science and research and the development of relationships with the business community are terrific. And to all, guided by my faith, I do believe in the separation of church and state.
Thank you. Chris?
I assume you're asking whether I believe we should follow the Constitution. The First Amendment is established that Congress shall make no law affecting an establishment of religion in the country. I'm not an American anarchist or revolutionary. The Constitution, I totally agree with on that point. I've lived in great Buddhist societies, great animistic societies, great Catholic society, great Baptist society. Which religion would be our religion if it were to be, if we were to go against the First Amendment? I'm with Thomas Jefferson. Let's stick with the First Amendment.
I was raised Hispanic Catholic. And I'm made a very clear, that when you're raised Hispanic Catholic, it is not just a spiritual experience, it's a cultural experience. And by being raised Hispanic Catholic, I was allowed to really, I think, and having a deep faith, to overcome racism, overcome challenges because of my ethnicity. And through my faith, I've been allowed to be open to all walks of life and ideas and philosophies, and I'm grateful for that. With that being said, I do support separation of church and state. But I also believe the no other religion should be put above any other. I think they should all be presented equally. And I think every individual that embraces their faith... And I think every individual that embraces their faith, or maybe they don't have a faith, whatever their philosophy in life is, my hope is that would live to a point that it's so admired that they've really challenged others to want to join them by the way they treat other people and the way they serve and the way they treat their spouses or their partners or their children. And so that's my hope and that's what I say about how I live my life.
Thank you. Okay. Johnson County Community College is nationally recognized for excellence. Can you name at least three programs that are the basis for such recognition? Angelina.
This is one that I'd like more research on. I know when I was doing a lot of studying about this race, I looked at a lot of the programs. I did a lot of interviewing with the leaders, students, grandparents, faculty. In this campaign, we've knocked about twenty-five thousand doors. It's something that I'm very passionate about is to make sure that I have input from the community as to what is their success in programming. Overall, a lot of it is coming back from the vocational ed. That's the welding, the railroads. We have some phenomenal courses in cosmetology. Those are the courses that keep coming up to me in, when I knock those doors and hear the feedback. I'd like to know more about so many programs. There's, this institution has a lot of things happening at the same time and so it's something that I'd like to continue to learn on.
Thanks. Chris.
If you haven't had the opportunity to walk through the museum, if you haven't had the opportunity to walk around the campus, you don't know that we have art everywhere here. The art program, the art history program is fantastic. I had to get it secondhand. My wife went on and on telling me all the details of Dr. Smith and her art history courses. The railroad program, I understand, is first in the nation. The, what else? The journalism department is terrific. It's very exciting, very hands-on, very applied. I studied journalism here. I took something like a course since now of journalism. So those are a few of the programs that are excellent. Thank you.
Jared.
Do I have three minutes?
Yes.
Well, in addition to what we've mentioned, I would say that one of the, one of the areas is the League of Innovation. There are one thousand one hundred eight community colleges in the country, in North America. Johnson County Community College created the League of Innovation. They were one of the founders and there are nineteen schools in the League of Innovation. Every time you have a change in administration, and I had the chance to sit through that a couple of times with changes in presidents, a team comes in to evaluate to see if you're still worthy to be in the League of Innovation, a league restarted. And that's one reason we have a great national reputation is through the League of Innovation. A second area would be, a few years ago, I happened to be coming through the college and I intersected Bruce Hartman, who is the leader of the Nuremberg Museum and our great art program. He was in tears and I said, "Bruce, what's the matter? Are you okay?" And he said, "You see that group that's leaving, going down the sidewalk? You see the fellow leaning against the wall with his head bowed down? He's the leader of a group of people that came here from the east, the east coast, four year universities, four year colleges." And he said, he couldn't believe that a community college had the art collection. The Nuremberg Museum is one thing and a very significant collection of art and a great building, but we also have great pieces of art throughout the whole campus. And Bruce, in his own way, the group was here to go to the Kemper Museum and spend time on the plaza, but he kind of borrowed them for an hour or two to come out here and they were overwhelmed with a community college having this resource. Now, let me get to three specifics. And as an example of how we try and meet business trends and community trends as well, we have a program called Neurodiagnostic Technology. It's a two-year-old program, we're one of sixteen programs in the United States, we're the only one with a pediatric focus with a cutting-edge program to monitor brain, the brain and the nervous system. The first class, seven of the ten graduates had jobs before they walked across the stage to get their degrees. A second area is dietary management, was introduced in two thousand twelve. We're applying for a nutrition health associate degree, which is offered by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and we're the, we're one of the first colleges in the country, one of the first colleges in the country to offer this program. That comes through our hospitality program. And then our revenue management course, which was added to the hospitality program, we had students go to Smith Travel Research and we were the only community college in the system and we ranked sixth out of eighty universities and colleges worldwide with our results, a couple of examples.
Thank you. Henry.
Could you repeat the question you had, please?
Johnson County Community College is nationally recognized for excellence. Can you name at least three programs that are the basis for such recognition?
Well, right off the bat, we have, our debate teams here in our institution compete at the four-year level against the ranks of Ivy League schools and Stanford's and such and place very well. We're actually, I think, like in the top two, three every time we go in competition. So our debate teams be phenomenal. You know, another area is our nursing program. Everywhere I go, I know people that know our nursing program. And then obviously, we have Brenton Northern Santa Fe here on campus, who's chosen us, our institution, to train their engineers all across the country. So we're very, very fortunate to have Brenton Northern Santa Fe. We're very fortunate to have our nursing program. And I mean, I could talk on and on about our arts, you know, program, our, you know, Nuremberg Museum and Bruce Hartman, the wonderful job that he does. But it doesn't, a day doesn't go by that you don't get maybe an email or an update on where our arts being transferred to. It's been to Guggenheim. It goes to Tokyo, it goes to Australia. Our art is requested and transferred throughout the world and, you know, it's no longer a secret that Johnson County has one of the most incredible collections of art and that our students are able to encounter that and they've got a part of their experience all along with our culinary department. So culinary department is worth one, but by no means the fourth.
Great.
Thank you. I'm totally the last or second one. The easy answer, I think, is Dr. Cook's answer with respect to the League for Innovation. Dr. Sobchak in his interview four years ago, during my transition, and someone asked him about the League for Innovation, he said, "Well, really, that's it. That's kind of the ballgame. Essentially, the Ivy League of community colleges were one of them." And it is further evidenced by the fact that we have grants with the State Department to help develop a community college movement in Pakistan. So I think the easiest answer is all of it, but I think certainly every example that's been given here just before me. I do want to mention the Sustainability Department. We have a number of awards that we went through there and it's near and dear to my heart as a Sierra Club ally, someone who's worked a lot in environmental and agricultural justice. The railroad, obviously, the culinary, hospitality culinary academy, model mentoring team that we have wins a tremendous number of awards. Four years ago, my wife and I came to see a performance of Les Mis by someone of the family who was here and she's a graduate of Hutchinson Community College and she only ever been here maybe once or twice. So I made her walk in one intermission across the campus just to see the scope and breadth of it because having grown up in Lawrence, thinking everybody has a major region school in their backyard, I think this compares. And just, I think through the facilities alone, you begin to see that we're truly blessed and in a good position compared to the rest of the state and the region.
Paul.
What a great question. I would like that word, both to borrow Jerry's notes and to hear if there is an official answer, what those, you know, I'm sure there's more than three, but just a scattering of those. But that's really been one of the most beneficial things about running for the college is every time I interact with a constituent of the county, they tell me a different experience of someone either they or someone they know has had at the college. You know, a couple of examples of that would be a woman that I know, her daughter participates in the Fair Program. I was not familiar with the Fair Program. I've since met several other people that have, have students involved in that. And then randomly, I was at a political picnic with someone and they told me that their son took fencing classes here and has since gone to Portland or somewhere in the northwest. There's a big fencing community there and that, you know, but for that class here at the community college, you wouldn't have done that. So, you know, just two very interesting things. In that vein, one of the things, as I got into this endeavor, I learned more and more and then every time I learned something, that gives kind of three more questions about other things. But I started cataloging those on my Facebook page. Every week I do a fact of the week. If I don't know it, it's someone that's very involved in different aspects of the community, that there are things going on here that I didn't know. I suspect that most voters and county residents don't know. In response to the actual question, I don't have the foggy as what those three would be. I'll give you three that really resonate with me and I think resonate with our community members. One would be the Culinary Institute and certainly the new building facility helps, helps with that. Sustainability, as well as Lee mentioned, Dr. Angel's doing a great job. And in my past career with Kansas City Power and Light and brighter day, I worked with Jay on a number of things as well. And then in addition to the DMS facility here, it's really the work that we're doing with the Intermodal Facility in Edgerton, helping train commercial truck drivers and others. So it's kind of a building of that partnership and one of the aspects that I think I can help the college with is help expand some of that outreach into the business community.
Great. Thank you all. Am I correct in understanding that we are going to eight thirty? So we have time for audience questions. Good job, everybody. And if you want to pass that up or just speak loudly or have your...
I was voted most likely to never even have a phone, so I got this. So I, I have three questions and I'm going to read all of them and then, no, just one? All right. Um, I, I guess I would ask each of you, um, ooh, okay. How do you represent, and I ask you specifically as a person, how do you represent a diverse population and address white privilege at Johnson County Community College for our future?
Well, that's, whoever wants to jump in. Angelina, go first.
As a woman on this panel, I think making sure that women are not wiped off the local boards, I think it's very important that we actively recruit and mentor women to run for office so that we continue to have a diverse voice on the board. With the majority of students that attend this college that are women, I think it's important to have that accurate representation on the board of trustees. To address white privilege, you basically show up and you listen. And that's how you really start to address some of the issues that we see in our culture right now, is to bring in people and have the table open to really discuss some of the uncomfortable topics, the racism and hateful rhetoric and stereotyping. As a white person, you need to be quiet and listen.
I'll go second. At the risk of offending anyone in this room, as I look around, I'll step out of the thin ice. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I believe Henrico Sandati is one of the few, if not the only Latino in this room. And as we look around this room, we're made up, I said one of few, and there may be a few. Yeah, Sanchez, of course. So we get this, we get this question a lot. Should the community college drive a diverse population or does the diverse population drive the college? It's that really good chicken egg question. And I think it's really important for us with a very changing county. We are a county college. We're projected to have a couple of million people here soon in this county. And it's important to be able to listen, as Angelina has said, to opinions of different cultures and different races. And as we're primarily a white county currently, it's important for us to consider that. I was proud to be on the board that appointed Henrico, he's spelled close by Henry, to the board. Nationally, one of our core values is diversity. I frankly think we should change that to unity because in the diversity value, we're trying to include people of all, give everybody equal opportunity. And I believe we can gain that same thing through unity. It seems like we're becoming more diverse with diversity initiatives. So it goes back to my answer on the religious separation of church and state. Internally, internally, are we each strong enough to be kicked in the shins? Because that hurts when we hear a viewpoint differing from ours. So from, if I hear something different than what a white male would be accustomed to, am I willing to listen and hear and make a change? I believe one of the strengths of our college daily, in each department, we have a process we go through to make a decision. We have a resulting decision. And then thirdly, do we review that process for improvement? And this whole issue about race and white dominance, white male, et cetera, et cetera, we all have to listen to a changing time and adapt to those various, to those various needs and cultures.
Lee asked to speak next.
Yeah, it's really a great question and I think one that's incredibly topical. I, I'm proud to have been on the board, the first board that appointed a minority. I think I have some insights to what Jerry, Trustee Cook, thought. I won't reveal that because I think it's a confidential choice in voting and it varies, it's several ballots and there were several candidates that always want to be on this board when there's no thing. And so I think, for me, appointing Henry was the right thing to do with the candidates I saw that night. My first choice was actually Reverend Bobby Love of the Way that, that night, I'm sorry, Henry, I compromised a little. But I think that was a choice that in my mind, anyway, speaking only for me, if the legislature was going to eliminate service boundaries that are essentially unwritten gentleman rules as to where we're supposed to serve, Johnson County, part of Miami County, and all the colleges are supposed to stay in their bubble, and they, they begin to erode those boundaries because frankly, they don't have the courage to tell those schools, "We don't have enough money for you, so we're going to let the market decide." For me, it was huge that we began reaching out to our minority communities and showed them that they have a face here, that they're welcomed here. I'm extremely proud of what this administration and our board did. When Secretary DeVos came here with the unique opportunity to inform, educate and begin to build a relationship with a national broker like that, we had a number of our foreign and international students that led the face of the college that day and they did quite well. And I'm thrilled with what we do. I think white privilege is an immense issue. I mean, it takes the rapper Eminem to rap a video to begin to connect with a white audience across the country after several other rappers of minority status have rapped about it all year. So I think it's a really good question and I'm proud of what we are doing. I know we can do more. We can always do more. I think Angelina is right that we need to listen more, but I think those of us with the conscience, guided by it, should speak out.
Henry, people keep talking about you. What, what, do you have something to add?
By the way, it's my portion of the show. You know, I, I'll tell you what, it's really amazing in my life, and I have experienced that racism itself in my family. I'm sure many other people as well. I mean, if you're a woman, I'm sure you experience prejudice in that regard, there's no doubt about it. But the reality is, is my experience has been, I have a father who chose to move us at an early age to a white community. And he did that because that was our reality. We were, we were minority. A minority is growing. But I would also try to say that minority is assimilated. And I don't speak Spanish. My counterpart here does. He demonstrated that to me out in the atrium here and spoke Spanish to me and I had to profess that no comprende español. and I had to profess that "No comprendo español." He went on and still battled to me in Spanish, like, I don't know what he's saying. I think he's just rubbing it in. But, uh, nevertheless, uh, I just want to say this, that there, you know, is there white privilege? I, I'm sure unintentionally there is. I think it was intentional at one time, and I think now it's unintentional. But I also want to say that there were many white families that took my family in. There were many white families that took me fishing. Our parents took me to the Boy Scouts, encouraged me to try gymnastics, and their kids tutored me, and they tutored me. And have you tried foods that we didn't eat in my household? Uh, so, the reality is, is, uh, I had African-American families that did the very same thing, and then the fears came down, and my family did the same thing. And so, what really drives all this is fear. I'm happy to say I think the fear's blown away. Now, for some, it's not, and it never will. But the best we can ever do is be the very best we can. And be, and be hospitable, and be loving and caring, and understand that we're all human beings, and we love one another, and we just want the best for ourselves, our children, our neighbors. And that's all it comes down to. Thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate the question, another good question. I think it's questions like that that prompt and force a discussion among board members, and are always worthwhile to have in our community. I'm not aware that there are any, any issues on this campus. I think overall, there's a very good culture. I think the demographics, and I don't have to memorize, so my college student left, I'm sure does. Uh, but I, I think our demographics are more favorable, show more diversity than the county at large, and I think that's a good thing. Uh, and certainly, as we look at, at the type of students we want here, that's something that we should always have on, at, at the top of our, our mind. Listening has been brought up a couple of times, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. You'll, you'll see that rarely do they have to put up a three-minute warning for me, and I'll, I'll say what I have to say and be quiet. Uh, would point to a couple, so I'm on the, the Johnson County Parks and Rec District Board, chaired last year and this year, and we, you know, one of our goals and missions there is to be inclusive. Uh, and that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of, a lot of people, but we've taken steps to, uh, build, uh, universal playgrounds so that, so that, um, you know, youngsters with disabilities can interact just like, like, uh, their, their neighbors and friends. Uh, we've looked at where we make investments in the county to try to be sensitive to those diversity issues. And then, to work with United Community Services, uh, also really touches, and there's a lot of intersections with, with diversity issues, and trying to target, uh, data, and, and really just have the understanding that there are certain populations in our, our county that don't have the same advantages of people like me, and a lot of us up here on this floor, and you need to be sensitive to that.
Thank you, my favorite subject. I worked around the world. I worked in 20 countries. I've spoken, not great deals, by 21 languages now, a little bit. One thing you do to represent diverse cultures is you're sure they're included at the table, they have input, and you don't do it just randomly and openly. You do it through structured processes that lead, this is a recipe book of exactly how to bring in key stakeholders, include them in at the table, go through a process that analyzes the situation, reviews the history, looks at the present, and then jumps the bounds of imagination into the future and dreams of the future we want, and identifies common ground areas in that future. When I did this in Bolivia, I brought together to achieve, to overcome government corruption in Bolivia, funded by the American Development Bank. I brought together members of the Congress, members of the presidency, members of the Supreme Court, members of groups against government corruption, members of the education committee, the community, of the religious community, and of the press, who had had it with corruption. When they went through the process and identified common ground, one of the members of the group wrote in his National Syndicated column in the major newspaper of the country, wrote that up until this year, after 35 years being involved in government, he had despaired of democracy in Bolivia. But after this three-day planning conference, with people from every perspective going through the process and identifying common ground, he had hopes of democracy. That's how I include different perspectives. I treasure the different perspectives. I ensure they are there. I ensure that they participate in our vision, and we achieve a common ground vision.
Are there any other questions in the audience? Any other? Okay, um, you can ask one of your other questions, and you will all have 30 seconds, because that's the timeline.
Oh, wait, hang on, we...
Oh, you wanna ask, go for it.
You guys will, I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Wait, we have a 30-second timeout.
I was gonna ask that question, but I'm going to consolidate it to two, because I know it's a consensus.
Okay, you have 15 seconds to ask the question.
Um, the consensus is there's, uh, the need for collaboration between the different elements within the community, between business, uh, community, universities, uh, and the junior colleges and the university system. And also, uh, the need for adjusting, uh, the college curriculum, the need to changing demands in the, in the workforce. Um, and getting rid of programs that are no longer needed. But there's two questions that I want to ask that haven't been touched on. The first one is the role of online learning, uh, at home or in rented-leased facilities, off-campus, which, uh, could be a possible source of cost reduction, as well as alleviating congestion on the college campus. Also, the need for accelerated learning programs, will shorten the time span, uh, attending junior college in greater coordination on the university level. I'd like to get the response from each of the candidates.
I'll begin. I, I thought it was collaboration there beginning, and I'll just take a few seconds to say we created a Collaboration Center. It's very active every day, uh, and it brings in businesses. Regarding the, um, online, we have about 20% of our courses are online. The challenge is every university in the country has online courses, and it's, it's become a very competitive marketplace. Uh, we do have accelerated programs, uh, College Now and others.
So, I'll, I'll focus on the, the online learning. And as Trustee Cook mentioned, that, that is an increasingly, uh, important part of what the college is doing, certainly, uh, from a revenue source and then how we, how we disperse learning. Uh, the, the things that the board is going to have to do, in my opinion, number one is set a ratio, what the appropriate ratio is of, of in-person learning versus online learning. A lot of faculty, uh, will, will tell you that the students learn better in-person than they do online, so that's an important consideration. And also, as we build more buildings, we need to look to see who's gonna be in those buildings that we invest in.
I, I concur with the previous two answers, as if they were set forth fully here. And I think relationships has probably been the most important thing I've learned as a member of the board. We, we have to maintain relationships. We're literally the walking around people in the community or in the state, and that's for private funding and public funding purposes. Uh, the role of online courses really is tougher than I thought it would be. And our faculty have fought to maintain quality standards in that online program. And the accelerated programs, uh, really are great here and help our students reduce, uh, costs as they move on to the college.
I've taken two or three online courses. I'm less impressed with them. They were worthwhile, but I'm less impressed with them than the course with the professor in the class with other students. If that's the only option you have, then online is better than nothing.
The internet is, uh, a part of our current reality, if you will, in every aspect, not just education. As a business man, we're seeing the impacts of that. And my experience is the insurance industry. We're seeing, uh, in the delivery systems, retail stores now are having that, uh, challenge as well. Uh, the fact is, is that there is a market for online students. Uh, and I would say that, uh, a majority of them are probably not. Uh, I would also say too, that this institution creates activities and experiences for business and education to come together, uh, to make, uh, you know, worthy and legitimate, uh, as a facility conductor.
I agree with a lot of the answers that have been given before. Uh, I think our online courses have become very competitive, which means we need to be able to offer cutting-edge courses that entice people to want to take, uh, our online courses. Uh, as a student, I have been a part of those online courses. You have to balance out the felt sense of what you get as an experiential learner. Uh, there's different types of learning styles, so we have to be able to accommodate that. And not all courses will be able to offer, um, the level of academic excellence that our Faculty Senate and Faculty Association demand.
All right, thanks to you all, and congratulations. You just, uh, addressed a super complicated topic in, in the amount of time that I get to make an afternoon radio news story. We do, we have one more question, and we have, uh, two minutes left. And so, I'm not sure how we can handle that.
Hello. I do have a quick question. I saw you were talking about online classes, and I know that you have several deaf students here, and it's hard to get access to those classes. So, how are you planning the future to improve accessibility or interpreting, um, programs for deaf students for those reasons? Because I'm part of the second-largest Kansas City metro-area population in America here for deaf citizens, so that's a question for J.C.
Uh, wait, hang on, I'm, I'm having a consultation. The incumbents, please answer this question for us.
Sure, it, it's an immense problem. On the Learning Quality Committee, we have reviewed that many schools, including Ivy League schools, have had to deal with providing text in, in videos and making sure that all of our students have access to the, to the material and to the substance of, of the courses. Uh, I'm not as fully prepared as I could be. We depend quite a bit on our staff, and, uh, I, I know we could probably be doing a better job, but I do know that we have addressed it, and I would certainly welcome any comments or criticisms you have after.
Well, I would say that, uh, it definitely is an issue, it's a concern. You know, and once again, as Trustee Cross was, was mentioning, you know, I think we're pretty much open to any, uh, ideas, perspective, criticism, to, uh, make it more accessible. Uh, and I apologize that it hasn't been more accessible. Uh, definitely, it's something that I've been made aware of here recently, as you pointed out, and I appreciate that, and we definitely want to address that issue. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you for bringing it up. I went back to process earlier. I have nothing additional to say to Trustee Cross and Trustee Sande, who have said that very well. We do need to listen. Uh, I am impressed at this college, that we have signage at many of our events, but how that relates to everyday classwork, uh, is something we need to improve upon. And I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention tonight. Thank you.
Anything to add? Okay. We're out of time, obviously. Uh, let's thank our candidates. Thank the Roman voters for helping with democracy. Okay, I just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Thank you to all the candidates for being here and, uh, participating in this forum. It's, uh, these forums are very important, and, um, I'm glad you allowed this community to hear what you had to say. And with that, we are adjourned.